Good evening, everyone. A now call to order this special meeting work session of Lancaster City Council for August 19th, 2025. A few reminders for all of you as we get started. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. This is a non-legislative working session of council this evening. Public comment will be taken at the end of the meeting on topics related to this evening's presentation of the administrative code. As always, comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must begin with your name and block of residence for our meeting record. Also, as a reminder, questions on these sections of the admin code will be taken after tonight's meeting by both the public and by council. We'll get a review of the timing at the end of the meeting. Members of council, we have one piece of business before we begin our presentation. That's the approval of the minutes of our July 15th, 2025 administrative code working session. You've been provided a copy of those minutes. I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Counselors, are there any comments on those minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris, if you would.
Madam President, do we, uh, want to do a roll call?
I apologize. As soon as I said that, I realized I had not officially taken a roll. So we'll put a pause on that and we will take the roll call of members. Thank you for keeping us straight, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Here.
Mr. Royo.
Here.
Mr. Kleese.
Here.
Ms. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Diaz. Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
And President Baker.
Here. Thank you very much. We'll now pick up that motion to approve the minutes of our last administrative code working session on July 15th. We had a motion and a second. Any council comments on the minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Kleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Thank you so much. All right. That will take us into tonight's presentation. Mr. Henwerker, that goes to you.
Good evening. Just as a reminder, this is our second, I'll call it tranche of the admin code. So we presented first, um, uh, over a two-month period preceding this, and this is the second tranche. And again, just as a reminder of where we're coming from, this is a starting point, um, not a mandate that you adopt in any format that it's currently in, but this is the starting point for discussion. Most of the provisions that you'll see tonight came from one of several places, um, either existing ordinance, and I'll try and note where that is as we get through them, um, existing third-class city code that we may not be bound by, but which we deem to be good practice, current practices, um, in some cases state law, and in some places just recommendations based on seeing other municipalities, um, uh, not just in Pennsylvania, but other places, how they deal with various items, and recommendations, excuse me, again, for you to, um, consider as you move through the administrative code process. And again, you're going to see, as we get later on, a holding place here for the ethics code, and just as a report to council, uh, the Ethics Commission has held its first meeting and will be advertising and scheduling two meetings in September, uh, shortly, um, and hopes to, uh, with the hopes that they'll be getting recommendations for things for you to include in your draft of the ethics code. Uh, the charter does specifically require you to draft the ethics code, and, um, the practice that we tried here is to put it, uh, into the administrative code, which is a common practice. It's not always done that way, but it is a common practice, um, so that you're getting everything done at one time, um, and in one place. Uh, and with that, what I'll do is, as we did last time, I'm going to walk you through, um, what you've now been provided, um, electronically, um, so that you can review it in detail. And tonight's, uh, discussion for me is meant to be a broad overview. Um, there will be obviously specifics in the language that you'll want to review as you go forward. Um, and keeping in mind that, uh, ultimately, this is going to be adopted by ordinance, which again means that it can be changed by ordinance. So it's part of the flexibility that the home rule option gives us as local governments. It's the greatest form of local governments, unlike the third-class city code. You don't get to elect in or out of any provision at any time. Here, uh, this is your starting point, and, uh, future generations of this council may find that things need to be changed and can so change it. Um, so these are the sections we didn't talk about last time in the first tranche, and the first one, and, and these are sections, quite frankly, that fit a little bit more at home with what you're used to seeing and, and used to doing. They cover a lot of what you do regularly. So we're going to start with organizational structure, um, Article III, Departments and Officials. Um, the Home Rule Charter, uh, law and the charter provide that we need to lay out in the administrative code, um, what the departments and organizational structure of the government is. Um, the charter lays out that the city is going to have seven council members and a controller, um, along with the mayor as being the elected officials of the city. The charter also requires that the city have a Department of Administrative Services and such other departments as may be, um, authorized by ordinance of city council from time to time. That's what Section 2 of Article 3 is covering. And Mr. Harris, you can move to that page for reference here. So we're beyond the table of contents and we're right into the, into the charter here. Um, so again, you're going to see that there are several departments and what we're calling, um, uh, major administrative units. Those major administrative units are the Office of the Mayor, the Bureau of Police and Bureau of Fire, um, and then we have, um, our departments. Um, each department, um, is to be headed by a director or chief, um, appointed as set forth in the charter, um, who has duties under the direction of the mayor to, uh, run their department, uh, in accordance with the ordinances of the city. State law, the administrative code, uh, prescribe the internal organization of the department or major administrative unit, uh, and the duties of subordinate officers and employees within those departments. Uh, we can go to the next page. Um, obviously to assign powers to their employees, to direct and supervise the work of their employees. And again, a lot of this is what we would expect. It's just never been legislatively, uh, laid out. Um, report, um, at least annually or at such times as council deems necessary to the mayor and council. Um, and this is a relatively new requirement, but one I think that is of best practice, which is, we actually do do it. It's done during your budget process, but it's really tied into the budget, and this is if council wants to elect a different format of reporting, it could. Um, uh, paragraphs eight and nine of this section dealing with the police chief and fire chief, these are provisions taken from our existing city ordinances, um, uh, chapters 42 and 67 of the code which deal with fire and police. Um, we talk about here the, um, concept of if a director can't serve for a short period of time, um, the mayor being able to designate a deputy, but that being a very limited, a deputy to serve, but that being for a very limited time before they have to appear before council, um, and make sure that council has vetted them for continuation. That is different than the appointment of an interim, um, director, which is essentially intended to be somebody outside the city and for a, um, a longer period of time than, say, the 90 days. So, um, an example of this would be, um, the hiring of, uh, we hired an interim police chief a while back, um, and then move forward with an internal hire at a later time. So, um, that's a provision that we've added for your consideration, um, is, is how to, how to deal with sort of, uh, making sure services are continued through the use of a deputy. Um, next page, Bernard. Other appointed officials covers the appointed official set forth in the charter, um, and it also includes a provision that the charter left specifically for council to determine, which is the roles and obligations of the city engineer. And what has been suggested here is that role may change over time. It's changed over time here at the city. Um, there was one point where we had one city engineer and maybe no others. Now we have multiple engineers working in multiple bureaus. They're not necessarily all working under the direction of one engineer. They may be working under different bureau chiefs. So the concept that's been proposed here, at least as a starting point, is that, um, with the appointment of the city engineer, uh, the mayor will be recommending, uh, for city council to adopt a resolution appointing that individual and setting forth the roles of the city engineer, um, at that time. So for example, right now, one of the things that we know needs to be done with somebody who has authority is, you know, signing certain stamps and putting certain stamps on documents. Um, if ultimately, uh, our departments reorganized such that there would be a full Bureau of Engineering where all engineers were supervised by one engineer, it is entirely plausible that at that point, we might want the city engineer to be the head of that bureau. Um, it's left again here flexible, flexibility. Um, if you want to prescribe something more, obviously you can, but this is the starting point for suggestion. Uh, the next section, and you can turn the page, Bernard, um, is the organizational chart that will exist, um, on December, January 1st, 2026. Um, as you, as you know, currently, we have a treasurer. The charter eliminated the position of treasurer, but the elected treasurer's term doesn't end until this, end of this calendar year. So this, this, uh, uh, organizational chart reflects what will happen when that position no longer exists, which would be at the termination of the elected treasurer's term. Um, ultimately, with adoption, we'd probably insert a note if this is adopted, obviously, prior to the, excuse me, to the end of the year, uh, that this chart is meant to go into effect, you know, upon, uh, the termination of the treasurer's, uh, current role. Section five and section six, um, essentially, I've referenced, these are, are your existing ordinances in chapters 42 and 67 of our code, dealing with, uh, provisions specific to the Bureau of Police and Bureau of Fire. Uh, one thing to note, um, in the Bureau of Police is a proposed change, uh, regarding, uh, who the, um, officers are. Currently, we have, uh, ranks, which are sergeant, lieutenant, and captain, and then there are assigned positions which include detectives. Uh, the proposal here is to make detective, uh, rank, um, and make that its appointment to detective to be subject to civil service, just like sergeants and lieutenants are. Um, this, um, uh, does a couple of things. It's, it's of benefit to our, and I believe to our city police officers in that they now have an objective standard by which, um, promotion to the rank of detective would be handled. It assures that the promotion process is handled the same way as sergeants and lieutenants, which is through a civil service project, hopefully assuring qualification, uh, and objectivity towards the selection. Um, it does not eliminate all, um, discretion from the appointing powers as, again, it's a group of three, um, and the appointing power can select, um, from that group, the member on that list they wish to fill the vacancy in that position. Um, but again, this is, uh, this is the way our sergeants and lieutenants have historically been promoted, um, and, uh, from both a functional and legal perspective, I believe it's the best way for detectives to be handled. The chief of police obviously concurs, or it would not be in here. Um, so that, that's a significant, what the one significant change in this provision from, uh, what you would see if you were to review the police, uh, code. Um, with respect to fire, the one, um, primary change is in, and again, you can flip the pages here, Bernard, um, um, is right there in D, um, which, uh, I believe the last time the fire ordinance was amended was relatively long ago, and no one looked at that provision in D, um, which included the, the number of fire chiefs, deputy chiefs, battalion chiefs, captains. Um, it was way high. So, um, uh, this is, uh, these are the numbers that were recommended by the fire chief and, um, uh, currently, um, the number of officers we have now, um, in terms of one fire chief, one deputy chief, four battalion chiefs, four captains, one of which, one of which would su- serve as the captain of the fire marshals, uh, and 12 lieutenants, um, with the concept that you wouldn't fall below that number. So it's sort of keeping, um, uh, where we're at, but not going below it. And again, this is an ordinance, so it can be changed, um, and this is a discussion point for start. Um, and again, the rest of that section is essentially, uh, almost identical to what's in your existing city ordinances. Um, as you move to section seven, civil service, a lot of this will seem somewhat repetitive to what's in the previous two sections regarding fire and, um, police, but this is essentially the civil service law, um, that's in place, and it, it goes into a little bit more detail than what's in our fire and police ordinances and in those sections, um, and deals with the provisions of civil service as they relate to our fire and police, uh, appointments and promotions. That moves us to Article 6, which is city council. Um, and you may be aware that, um, chapter 55 of the city code currently governs a lot of the activities of city council, and much of the information, if not almost all of it, has been incorporated here, uh, including, as you'll note, paragraph F, which is the agenda of meetings. Um, no recommendations have been made for that. Um, again, that, that's just incorporated. That's council's pleasure to determine whether they wish to discuss that. Um, what's been put in here, um, in section two are requirements, again, that we, um, hold our meetings in conformity with both the, the charter and applicable law, which includes the Sunshine Act. Um, again, that we make sure we keep our minutes in accordance with those laws. Um, uh, note that we publish or advertise our meetings in accordance with applicable law. Um, it maintains the, uh, provisions for appointment of the president of council. Um, it incorporates the charter's requirements, um, that meetings be held, uh, um, between 6:00 PM and 9:00 PM, and incorporates the current 6:30 PM start, um, and that's also consistent with the charter. Um, paragraph G, um, incorporates provisions of the Sunshine Act regarding, um, uh, public comment. Um, it, it talks about rules of orders, again, which are in chapter 55, um, and talks about how members can speak. Again, that's all provisions that you'll see consistent with chapter 55 of our code. Um, one thing to note in the last paragraph of, uh, this section G, chapter 55 has a provision that I'm not sure how to interpret as an attorney. The current provision says that you can waive the provisions, your rules and regulations at a particular meeting upon a two-thirds vote. But I find two-thirds very difficult to calculate when you have a council of seven or five or four. The division doesn't work mathematically. Last I checked, people are whole, and so decimal points and fractions don't work real well. Um, what I've proposed here is a way to make it clear, which is majority plus one of the members at attendance at the meeting. So for example, if you had seven, in order to waive any sort of requirement, so I'll use the example, you have a three-minute use the example, you have a three-minute requirement, and council decides for the purpose of this meeting, we want to waive that three-minute requirement. You would need a vote of five members at that time in order to do it. If you had five members present, you would need four. Again, not allowing just the general politics of a majority, but taking what I think was the original chapter fifty-five's concept of a supermajority, but putting it to a number we can actually calculate, which is a majority of members present plus one. And again, that's for your consideration. These are just ways of sort of bringing what we currently do and maybe making them a little bit cleaner. Section three, again incorporates the ability to create committees, talks about the time for committees, committees' requirements to comply with the Sunshine Act relating to public meetings and the keeping of minutes, requiring the, the notice of meetings and the, and the minutes of meetings to be posted on our publicly accessible website, allowing council members to be appointed to serve on boards and commissions or authorities. So, for example, if we have a board that does say we should have a member of council on it, we obviously want to make sure that's allowed. One of the things that paragraph E does do, however, is say that, look, if that board member, that council member's term as a council member expires, their membership on that board commission or authority should also expire, right? Like, the reason they were appointed was not as one of the general appointments, but as the council representative. And so, if they're no longer on council, council would need to replace them with a council representative. Section four is, is simply a matter to confirm law, which is to indicate that council is a continuous body, meaning that as your membership changes every two, potentially changes every two years, the acts of council in each version bind the other. So, like, it's still the action of council and not, well, it's a new council, so we don't have to follow what the old council did. No, I mean, you have to follow it unless you change it by ordinance, resolution, or appropriate motion, as would be appropriate in this situation. Section five talks about filling vacancies. This is our current practice. It's also the practice in the third-class city code, and it's the practice, it's the language from the charter. Now, what I note here is that there's been no procedure for council to follow in filling vacancies, whether that be on council, the office of the mayor, the office of the controller, all of which can happen based on the charter if there's a vacancy. You have an option here if you want to legislate what the process of council should be, whether that be, we're going to go through public interviews, we're going to put it, you know, ask for nominations, however that is. I've left this to be your pleasure. I've seen it done differently by different versions of this council and other councils many times over thirty-five years. I did not want to presume to make a recommendation, so I've left it, which is current, which is you can decide each time, or if, if a member of council wants to propose legislation to add here, they can. Section six incorporates both provisions of the charter and a current resolution, an existing resolution of council requiring training for members of council. Section seven, again, is a requirement to take the oath of council. Section eight and nine are new and are meant really as discussion points for you, not necessarily recommendations, but also really points to consider. Section eight deals, deals with the power to maintain order and allows, would allow council president to have individuals removed from the room who are not complying with council policy, and if a council member was doing the same, to suspend or terminate the meeting. Again, these are, these, this is a provision that appears in many admin codes and other similar codes. It's something here for thought. Section nine is also for thought, which is, we talk about excused and unexcused absences, but what is the penalty for that? There really isn't one because you can't, you can't make somebody forfeit their office or lose their office. So, the thought here is if council wanted to have a provision where whatever compensation council members are receiving, they had some sort of financial limitation on that. In other words, some loss of their compensation if they had a certain number of unexcused absences. So, nine is, is an attempt to start to discuss that. Section ten is a lot of what I think we already do. It's never, it's not in legislation. It's sort of an expectation that you have for one another already, but hasn't been legislatively placed. Again, you don't have to put this here. This is, these are things that I think most of you would say, in most cases, we, we do and we should do. So, we're talking about conduct and staff communications. You know, it's, it's maintaining decorum. It's preparing themselves for public issues, listening courteously, courteously and attentively. You know, and avoiding debate during public comment. Public comment is for public comment. Following procedures adopted by council and refraining from interrupting others while speaking. You know, making sure that you are clear as to your opinion versus council's opinion, right? No one can say what council's opinion is unless council has voted on it or adopted a resolution or ordinance. So, again, these, this is as much meant for people that might want to become members of council, to understand what their roles and obligations are, and make sure they go into it with clear eyes, and to help guide those who are actually on council, might have to think, wait a minute, do I have a different expectation of how I react in this setting than in others? You know, it's about how I can respond to citizens in writing, and what sort of, what I can say on letterhead, and what are my responsibilities. You know, obviously, a requirement, which is common sense, not making false statements, you know, to, that other council members are going to rely upon. And then, you know, basic courtesy in dealing with city employees, because under the structure that the charter has adopted, which is you're the legislative body, and then the administration is under the supervision of the mayor, and the employees are technically under the supervision of the mayor, for both legal and practical purposes, making sure that it's clear what roles you can or can't have in terms of communications with staff. And most of these are really common sense, but again, they're here for your view, discussion, and thought. We then move to Article seven, which is ordinances and resolutions. And again, a lot of this is what we're already doing. It's already in city ordinance. It's already in the third-class city code. We already, we do have a mandated two-reading requirement that comes from the charter and past practice. A lot of the provisions regarding ordinance and numbering of ordinances are the same. One thing I'll note here is in section one, part B, number four, is something that I'm suggesting, which I think will help staff, council members, and more importantly, citizens and interested parties in your legislation, which is the requirement of a memo with the introduction. So, if a council member or the staff is introducing either, and obviously both can do that, right? An ordinance producing with that original version of the ordinance, a memo that, that answers some key questions. This is similar to the way the state adopts legislation and the federal government, so there's actually, you're starting to create a legislative history and an explanation as to what is the issue or problem the ordinance is intended to address, and how is it brought to the attention of the city or council? Are there areas in the city, if any, where the issue or the problem is more predominant? What are the impacts of that issue or problem? Does any data exist relating to the issue or problem? What is the source of the data? What are the intended benefits and outcomes of the proposed legislation? Are there any existing ordinances which address the issues or problems, and if so, why are they insufficient or inefficient? Can we confirm that compliance with the proposed ordinance will not cause undue burden on any sector of the community? How and by whom will the ordinance be enforced? I can tell you, having drafted a lot of ordinances for municipalities over the years, this is oftentimes a forgotten-about provision. Unfunded mandates is, is sometimes we like to refer to them. How frequently should data from enforcement be reviewed by council, staff, or both? And is there any reporting required by, of staff or council? And how does state and/or federal law impact the proposed legislation? These are all, from my perspective, basic questions that council should always be aware of when any ordinance is introduced, but to actually memorialize it as a requirement to do so, make sure that the public gets that information, and also puts a level of due diligence on ordinance drafting, right? It's, it can't simply be a very fast reactionary sort of process. There needs to be some thought and look to make sure that we're doing it right. If you take a look at our Code of Ordinances, you will see things that were drafted piece by piece over time in reaction to certain things. That doesn't mean they're bad, but like, can we go and find legislatively why it was done? It's going to be really a challenge. Here now, we would be able to track back historically, and because these would become permanent records of the city and part of the ordinance record, we would be able to track the reasoning, which would be helpful when we get to the point where somebody questions, what about this ordinance? Why isn't it be used? How did it come? You know, all of those types of things. So, I'm encouraging this one. This is, this is a recommendation from me. I did a presentation to council a number of years ago, dealing with similar topics, and I had a much larger, broader length of questions. The mayor helped me craft those down, giving credit where credit is due, to what I think is, is, is really actually reasonable and not undue work. It's not creating paper for the point of creating paper's sake. It's actually creating paper for the point of producing a better ordinance. Section B, reading advertisement and enactment of ordinances. This incorporates our existing practice of two readings. One thing I will note is with ordinances under the third-class city code, we're required to advertise an ordinance in the Lancaster newspapers prior to adoption. If any of you have ever looked, those notices appear in the classified section, and they're little blurbs and not always the most easy-to-find legal notices. The charter left it open to advertising, publicly accessible website, or other methods chosen by council. This does not apply to notices of meetings. Meetings still must be advertised in the Lancaster newspaper under the Sunshine Act. What's in the administrative code here is a proposal that we utilize the publicly accessible website for posting them. Requirements later on that they be posted in a very clear and easily, easy-to-find location, so that it's not sort of hiding the ball in another place. That will be one of the last sections we talk about tonight, but I note for your consideration, that's been put here. There's been a lot of discussion about, do people really read the legal notices? Is it a worthwhile expenditure of the city? What's the best way to get notice out? That's really what this is about, right? I mean, when we talk about advertising the ordinances, we're talking about the best way to notify the public of something that's coming. The Sunshine Act requires us to post the agenda at least twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting. We have to notify the public of an adoption of an ordinance at least seven days prior under the charter. How we do that is really the question here, and I'm not saying that this, you might choose to do otherwise. This is just a place where I see that technology might be of assistance here. I note that there is a downfall with that, right? So, what happens if the website went down? I would tell you that that would be a prohibition to you taking action on an ordinance, which is more encouragement to make sure that the city keeps its technology, which everybody relies on, properly acting and working as it's supposed to, but that is one of the risks, just like if, you know, you didn't add in the newspaper in time, you would have the same risk. So, you know, next page, resolutions, really follows our current practice, current third-class city law. Section three, proof and evidence, is a legal provision that gives courts the directive that if the city clerk certifies a motion, resolution, or ordinance as being the motion, resolution, or ordinance of city council, that that court can take judicial notice of the fact that it was actually adopted by city council, rather than if we got into an enforcement proceeding, and unfortunately, I've had to do this, I have to drag members of city council in to actually testify that they took a certain action, which seems a little bit contrary to what we would like to do from a procedural standpoint. Section four just authorizes us to enforce ordinances, quite frankly, in the way that's authorized by law, which is through fines, penalties, costs, attorney fees, injunctive relief, and any other remedy. Most of our ordinances lay those out, and this is, again, just putting that in the administrative code. Article eight is an entirely new procedure, and this one is mandated by the charter. So, the charter has a number of provisions that lead to council being able to determine that an elected official should have their office forfeited. One thing I will note legally is that council can't effectuate that. In other words, they can determine that somebody should have their office forfeited, an elected official, for the reasons set forth in the charter, but ultimately, official action needs to be taken depending on the, the reason for the forfeiture in one of two ways. One is through a formal impeachment procedure by the Senate, the Pennsylvania Senate, the state senate, and the other is what's called a quoranto procedure, either, both of which would be initiated by the solicitor. So, this procedure, what it's doing is setting forth the way notice would be given to the individual who, somebody believes, council or the administration believes that their provisions of the charter justify a forfeiture action, their right to have counsel, when a hearing would be held, the right to have a hearing, and then directing that there'd be a written decision on that produced within forty-five days after the hearing is concluded, and that if the decision is for forfeiture, authorizing and directing the solicitor then to proceed with the appropriate action at the time, whether that's quoranto, Senate impeachment, or some other procedure that Pennsylvania law might then adopt. It also provides a deal provision, and Bernard, you can slip the page here, which is allowing, there is a, there is, and this is consistent with Pennsylvania law, there is an act called the local agency law, which allows for any act of city council or the city that's finally determined to be appealed to the Court of Common Pleas, and this incorporates that appeal procedure there. We then move to, again, an updated provision of the charter, from the charter and the Home Rule Charter law, which is a section on boards, commissions, and authorities. Most of this is tracking what's already in the charter and what's, was currently done, which is the notice appointment and vacancies and term for appointment. It's confirming the charter's provision that appointments are to be made by the mayors with the consent and advice of council, except as otherwise provided by an applicable law. So, if a law says that the appointment is to be made by the legislative body, it would be council's appointment. Now, even though this says this, it, it does provide for the term and that vacancies will be filled in the same way that appointments are made. One new item is a removal clause, which does not exist currently, and again, this is, again, for thought, and being very careful here to note what you can be removed for. So, this should not become a political item, from my perspective. The, the only two things that we've put in here are repeated failure to attend required meetings, violation of the ethics code, or impropriety in office. So, the fact that, you know, an appointment to commission, board, or authority is not doing what the political leadership thought they should do is not a reason for their removal. That's been built in here, and again, this is a starting point for your discussion, and you may choose, maybe there should be a way to remove it. That, that, again, is your call. It would still be subject to law, but, and here, the removal then is with the consent of city council and only after ten days' written notice.
They need to change that.
Sure.
They turned into a pumpkin after so long, I think.
And moving on with, with, most of all of our ordinances, and if you look at Article twenty-two, or chapter twenty-two of our code, many of our boards and commissions are covered in that chapter. There's others where they're created, but in almost all cases, in accordance with applicable law, actually, they, they give the board and commission the right to create their own rules and procedures. What we've done here is suggest that we clarify that they still have to comply with the Sunshine Act. They still have to comply with the right-to-know law, that they have to have advanced notice publication and notification of their meetings. They have to keep minutes. The minutes have to be posted on the website, just like city council minutes. The one thing I'll note here that's also here is that they can't, they can't just unilaterally choose to use this, this room or other city facilities. Like, that needs to be approved by the city staff, and live streaming has to be approved by the mayor, so that we have control over the use of all of all the city facilities. That's what section F is provided for in part F of section one. Section two, training. This incorporates, again, a current provision by city resolution to have new members and reappointed members get trained on, specifically, currently, it covers Sunshine Act and right-to-know law. I've made this a little broader to help cover some other topics, which might be, in fact, some of the laws that they're formed under, just so that they get some of the laws that they're formed under, just so that they get sort of a little broader perspective. So it's a little bit broader, a little broader term. Again, Section 3 requires meetings to be held in accordance with the Sunshine Act. Section 4, the Home Rule Charter law, and the charter requires to lay out the authorized boards, commissions, and authorities, which means that as those boards and authorities are changed, you're going to need to obviously amend this section of the admin code when that happens. Section 5 is similar to what we talked about with council. There is nothing in the current legislation of the city's current ordinances that deals with the conduct of board, commission, and it should say, I think, authority members. I think I have committee there. We'll fix that on a final cleanup. But these are, again, sort of the same things that council members are talking about, right? Like, what's decorum? Again, making sure they understand that their opinions are theirs and not of the commission, board, or authority, or the city, right? Talking about correspondence. Again, reiterating that they may end up in executive sessions, and if information is given in an executive session, typically, the reason for the executive session is that our state legislature has determined that the information that's going to be discussed should remain private, although the formal action must be taken in a public meeting. So it's, again, requiring them and encouraging them to maintain that confidentiality, obviously, again, not making false statements, and having a respect for the process in which they were appointed to serve. Section 6 requires the city administration to provide the proper levels of support to each board, commission, and authority to assure compliance with policy and applicable law as well. Article 10 is ultimately the ethics code and where the ethics code will go. There are some provisions here that may or may not be changed as you deal with your drafting of that code through recommendations of, through and with recommendations from yourselves and the Ethics Commission. One of the things that I've done here is just added two items that are not specifically covered by the charter, which is the special privileges and incompatible employment or activity. The charter provisions tend to deal with mostly the financial sort of impropriety, and these are ones, again, just to put in your thoughts and ultimately the Ethics Commission's thoughts as it considers these, and again, confidential information. I've laid out in Section 5 a whole lot of the things the charter already talks about that should be coming and be provided. I would note that what's going to, what I think is going to come from the Ethics Commission are going to be a lot of recommendations that are far more detailed than these, that deal with procedure and operation. How is a complaint filed? Who is it submitted to? Who is it investigated by? How are complaints, how is confidentiality and privacy protection protected during the course of that process? What are the penalties, if any, for a violation of the act? How are those penalties enforced? There's a whole series of things that theoretically should be in an ethics code that are not here and not to you yet. You know, I could take a stab at drafting them, but the Ethics Commission should weigh in first, and that is the intended action. And again, there are some places here where things that weren't necessarily covered by the charter and aren't always in an ethics code, but could be. For example, confidential information could or couldn't be. It depends on the particular body are placed here for you to start giving thought, because ultimately, you do have to draft an ethics code, and you will be held to it, as will all other appointed officials and employees. So hopefully, we'll have something back for me from the Ethics Commission by the end of September and early October as they do their work. Article 16 is mandated for inclusion by the Home Rule Charter law, which is to start, which is to have a section on employment and human resources administration. A lot of what you're going to see in this section, you would expect to see, and you would expect the city to be doing. The specific policies, in most cases, are left to the Human Resources Bureau under the direction and supervision of the Director of Administrative Services and the mayor to ultimately draft and implement, but the requirements are essentially, let's start with, comply with law. You know, we have to comply with the federal alphabet soup. Let's start with that. You know, you've got Federal Family Medical Leave Act. You've got ADA, American with Disabilities Act. There's a whole series of acronyms of laws, EEOC, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. So what you're going to see as you go through here are those sorts of provisions. Couple notes in the introduction part of this is that you cannot supersede a collective bargaining agreement. As you may be aware, we currently have three unions and therefore have three separate collective bargaining agreements. Their provisions are not identical, and so we can't supersede those, and we have to give, we have to, anything we adopt has to be notwithstanding those. That being said, those are all meant to comply with law, but how we deal with policy might be different with each of the three. Discipline would be an example of a place where that rises. A great deal of time is spent in Section 2 confirming and making sure it's clear that employees are at-will employees. They are subject to certain constitutional rights, but they are still at-will employees, and making sure that no employee, manager, or supervisor can create a situation where the city is now bound by an employment contract. And that's really a protection for the city taxpayers, to make sure that we're not bound by an employment contract. As an employer, the city wants to be able to move away from employees lawfully that it's entitled to move away from, and not be bound contractually to stay with them. We move into, again, in general, provisions on being an equal employment opportunity employer, prohibiting sexual harassment and workplace violence, prohibiting retaliation and any sort of retaliation for, you know, employees doing the right thing, providing work accommodations where they're required by law. Paragraph F, code of conduct for city employees, is essentially the rewrite of our current code, a current policy. And again, I would expect that much of this will either be removed and/or moved into the ethics code. I put it here only because these are provisions that are already existing in city policy so that both you and the Ethics Commission can see them as you do your work towards the ethics code. And I've added one or two in paragraph three, because obviously, we did not have an ethics code or charter when this policy was drafted, but for the most part, this is a document that city has as its policy currently. So to put that here so that everybody knew what already existed, what was in place from a policy standpoint, and may or may not be incorporated into legislation. Social media is also part of that as you page into the next page. The policy actually combines both of those. Paragraph G, and that's the next page there, Bernard, I think. So paragraph G moves into authorizing the Bureau of Human Resources to adopt and implement appropriate employment policies, and, you know, covers a broad sort of topics there. And, I mean, the policy manual here is thick, as you might expect with 600-plus employees, you know, multiple types of business operations, for lack of a better word, when you talk about, you know, our DPW functions, police functions, fire functions, administrative functions, planning functions. We also require HR to establish a complaint process so that employees can file appropriate complaints if they believe they're being treated improperly, and have them processed both effectively and efficiently, and most importantly, in accordance with applicable law, to protect both the employee and the city. And I say that our policies are drafted to protect both the employee and the city, and that is a really key factor, is that employees deserve the protection and to make sure that they are treated objectively across the board. The last section in this tranche of code, which ultimately now is at about 60 pages, and I expect will end up being, you know, larger as we get into the ethics code and add it in, includes some general provisions. One is to authorize, legislatively authorize electronic signatures, which, you know, currently would need to be, is not in a legislative process. I will tell you, we use them regularly. I think most business does these days. It's almost impossible to process inked signatures with some of the things the city does in a timely manner, so that's here. Again, authorizes the creation of fees. You already approve fees annually typically in two ways, annually as part of your budget, and then whenever council brings forth, whenever the administration brings forth an amendment to our fee resolution. One of the things that this does now is place an affirmative burden on the Director of Administrative Services to create a comprehensive fee schedule and to maintain it in a clear manner on the publicly accessible website. So, and it directs the Director of Administrative Services to periodically review and arrange for their review to make sure fees are in accordance with the services being provided, and more importantly, the cost of the services being provided. We do that typically every several years, and oftentimes annually as part of the budget process, but there's been no real legislative requirement to do so. It's really been sort of molded by practice as best management practice and into the budget practice. And here, again, taking best management practices and making sure we're transparent that we're going to do that is the recommendation. Section 3 incorporates Chapter 36 of our existing code, dealing with the city's ability to file municipal liens and enforce city ordinances. There really isn't anything new here. When you get to the attorney's fees, those fees were listed, they had to be put in place at, I'm going thinking at least 20 years ago. I'm not saying they're wrong or right. They were put in place when the city was using outside counsel regularly. There's still a time and expense part to preparing all of these things if the city pursues a claim process or a fee. This is a way to make sure that there's no shock and surprise to residents, to have it legislatively placed. Municipal Claims Act requires that if you're going to assess attorney's fees in a municipal claim, that they have been legislatively approved. So if the fees are updated, that's fine, but you do want to keep these because the administration can use claims, municipal claims, as an optional form of enforcement of its ordinances. There was a time when these were used very, very regularly, and then there was a time when that practice was discontinued. It's really sort of the pleasure of the day based on how the world is working in the administration. What you don't want to do is then create and not be able to recover what you're entitled to recover. So at least legislatively having it in place, to me, is the right thing to do. Lastly, is Section 4, which is the publicly accessible website. And again, I mean, I've kept this really clear. You may want to include more specifics on this as you go. I've left this for you to consider, but the key notices here are, you know, notices to be posted, thereon should be posted in a conspicuous and easy-to-find manner. Clear designation shall be given. Defined posted rules and regulations promulgated by the city in accordance with this administrative code. One thing I should note is, in the section you get to on departments, when you review that, is there is a provision that says departments can promulgate rules and regulations. Anytime they're promulgating rules or regulations that relates to a service being provided to city residents, those rules and regulations must be posted. And so that's, again, making sure that there's no sort of hidden rules and regulations that people are only, that are only brought out sort of when needed versus in upfront. So those are the provisions that I've included for your review. Again, you'll get the opportunity now to read these in detail. Obviously, folks, you can send emails to me. I ask, again, to email me directly, not to email group email, so that we make sure that any responses I might give. I'll share responses, but I don't want sort of a discourse to go on. DJ, we'll have the portal open for questions from the public. That's open tonight, DJ?
Soon as the meeting is over.
Soon as the meeting is over, and will be maintained open, quite frankly, until two weeks after our next meeting. So, again, for citizens to pose questions and for you to see that, and for us to then respond to those questions, for you to see those responses. And I'm, again, just going to reiterate one last time. I'm not the elected official here. I serve as council for the city as an entity, which is a whole lot of cast and characters, right? So I've got, I've got city council, I've got employees, I've got the administration, I've got all the independent units of the city. What I've tried to do in giving you the entirety of this administrative code is my best effort at giving you a good starting point for what I think are good practices, good things to think about. It's up to you to decide whether you want more or less, and to have debate about those topics. I feel fairly comfortable that what's here would be a really good administrative code. That being said, it doesn't mean it can't be improved and be made flexible by, made by you to meet what you, as the elected council members, decide is most important. So the administration has worked hard to try and find the same level of objectivity that I've talked about. These provisions have been reviewed by members of the administration in each of their departments. We're not objecting to the new requirements that are put on them, and there are new requirements put on them. There's reporting requirements, there's administrative requirements, the budget process obviously is far more detailed than it was just a year ago. So this is all about, you know, what's best for the city and its taxpayers, and we turn this over to you, and hopefully with the next meeting, we can have really great discourse about some or all of these provisions. And that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Handberger. To remind members of council, that next meeting is September 16th. That will be our next work session, and as we did in the last work session, we'll be going through the sections and having discussion and looking for consensus before this is presented as an ordinance in a regular meeting of city council. I just want to kind of follow up and ask, because, you know, the last section, there was a lot of consensus right off the bat. The things were very clear, I think. If members of council have specific additions and edits that they would like to present for discussion, would you prefer that that come to you for the next meeting, or would you prefer that they hold them until we are in that work session? I'm not sure what the best way to present that would be.
From my perspective, I don't need advanced notice, but if council wants my opinion on how's the best way to draft this, is this saying what I wanted to say, feel free to reach out to me. You know, this is supposed to be discussion amongst yourselves, but I'm here to help facilitate that. So I would encourage my role as a facilitator. I'm not in control of it. It's your document to do with as you desire. I'm happy to take a review of anything you might be proposing, ideas you might be proposing. If, you know, if you'd rather understand, is this going to be allowed by law? Sure, reach out to me before you get an answer of no, or, oh, I have to research that. I might be able to get the research done before the next meeting. So from that, from, I think that, is that enough answer?
That was the purpose of that question, and of course, reaching out to you separately, again, to avoid discussion, which would violate Sunshine Law.
Yes.
Thank you. And same with members of the public, submitting those questions and comments through the portal so that we can be prepared to discuss them. Although it will be open after the meeting on the 16th, it would be best to talk about them before the 16th, if possible. So thank you very much for that this evening. We will now, councilors, move into public comment during this meeting. It's open to comments on the administrative code sections that were presented this evening. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and must begin with the speaker's name and block of residence for our meeting record. If anyone wishes to make public comment this evening, you can please proceed to the microphone at the end of the table. And you may need just to turn that on.
Tony Dash, 700 Block, New Holland Avenue. As you work through advertising requirements, I encourage you to have redundancy built into the system. Mentioned websites going down, but newspapers being an old style. Those two things working in concert could be great. Redundancy is the reason we have two traffic lights on one pole, so if one goes out, you don't blow through a red light and kill somebody. So redundancy in the advertising, I think, in the 21st century is necessary. And then on the note of transportation metaphors, as you work through the city engineer, whether in this document or otherwise, I encourage you to prioritize the position of city engineer to be given to somebody who has municipal traffic engineering certification as dictated by Title 67, Chapter 212, and I encourage- And I encourage that because that sort of certification empowers our city to have more control over the traffic control devices on state roads, reduces the friction we need to, friction or just delay we have with PennDOT. It allows us to, for example, change signal timings to experiment. We don't have to submit a report to ask PennDOT to do it. We have to follow their standards, but it empowers the city to do it themselves. So those are my two main things based off the subject of tonight. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional comments from the public on this evening's content? Hearing none, we'll close public comment this evening, and that is the end of our agenda. Councilors, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you very much.